Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to start the recognitions portion of this meeting. The time is 6:51 and as noted at 6 o'clock when we started the session, there are four council members present absent Councilmember Vera who shall be joining us, we hope soon.
Okay.
First up, we will be doing a presentation of a proclamation in honor of Women in Business Week 2024 in Culver City. Do we have anyone present for that?
Yes.
All right. Welcome in. Thanks for being here. We're going to kick off with first the 25th, 2024. And whereas Culver City has and continues to encourage community members to shop locally in support of our Culver City-based establishments to help maintain a robust economy and ongoing job opportunities within businesses both large and small. And whereas, staff and officials, and whereas, the Small Business Administration's National Small Business Month in October was launched in honor of H.R. 5050 of 1988. I see I was worn. The Women's Business Ownership Act with intended practical goals such as celebrating, highlighting, and supporting women-owned commerce as well as generating awareness. And it with Emma Dodd Partridge, Executive Secretary of the National Federation of Business and Professional Women's Clubs from 1924 to 1927. And whereas, Culver City has a growing community versus Women in Business Leadership Awards. And whereas, this year, the Women in Business Council celebrated the following honorees at a luncheon on October 25th, 2024. Angeles Outpatient Center, Sarah Loughlin of Sarah Wine Bar and Kay Bella Pizza, and Lucia Diaz of Mar Vista Family Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Culver City hereby proclaims the week of October 21st to promote, support, and shop of women-owned businesses. Clearly, we're a little late. Continue to do so moving forward and hello to our friends in the air.
Oh, thank you.
Dated this 28th. Would you like to say some words?
Thank you to the Culver City Council members, especially Yaron. It's for your unwavering support of Women in Business Week for establishing it, I believe it was in 2018, Yaron, when you presented. And I'm so grateful to be here in the presence of council members, residents alike, and believe who believe in the power and the potential of women in business. As a small business owner, I know firsthand how much heart and hard work goes into opening our doors every day. This journey is anything but easy. It's not about, our work is never performative. It's deeply rooted in the desires to uplift and support the very community that sustained us, sustained us. I personally appreciate the council members who have consistently shown up Women in Business Month. And last week, we, the Culver City Chamber members, also had our ninth annual luncheon. I want to extend the gratitude and thank you for all that were in attendance, including our residents. When we shine the light on women who lead, it doesn't just be, and for the continued support, I encourage everyone to support women-owned businesses in our city. Your support means everything to us. Together, we're making Culver City a place.
We are here to do a commendation in honor of LaShinda Dimas. Please join us in the while. Thank you so much for being here. My pleasure to meet you. Am I saying that correctly? Okay. LaShinda Dimas, a two-time Olympian and mother of four, has consistently demonstrated exceptional talent, passion, hard work, perseverance, and dedication in track and field, representing the United States with pride. On Dimas's inspiring journey placed her at the 2024 Olympic Games in Paris, where she received a gold medal for her 2012 London Olympic Games win in the 400-meter hurdle. As Dimas's commitment to excellence and relentless training has led her to achieve significant milestones in her career, including winning a gold medal and the 2009 World Championship in the, in the 400-meter hurdles title in Dugue, I'm sure I'm saying that wrong, apologies, setting the American record, winning silver medals in the 400-meter hurdles at both the 2009 World Championship in Berlin and championships in the 400-meter hurdles in Moscow, becoming the first American to win the 400-meter hurdles at the Olympics and many other accomplishments as a collegiate athlete. I don't know if I said the word championship so many times in a sentence, so shout out to you. Whereas, she has not only claimed victory on the world stage, but also highlighted the impact that one individual, and one individual can have on the lives of many. And whereas, LaShinda's journey to athletic stardom is a testament to her unwavering dedication to the sport, coupled with her commitment to her community, as Culver City High School's co-head track and field coach, has made her a role model for aspiring athletes everywhere. Part of her community, her friends, family, especially her mom, Yolanda Dimas, who as her coach at the 2012 London Olympic Games, became the first mother-daughter coach-athlete duo to win a gold medal for the USA in track and field. That's pretty cool. Fractions of a second can mean the difference between glory and heartbreak. We honor the spirit of a true, of true professional athleticism. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends LaShinda Dimas, who has consistently proven herself to be one of the very best competitors, whose talent has etched her names in the annals of track and field history, leaving an indelible mark on the sport that she loves. Thank you so much. Would you like to say some words?
Thank you very much. And I do have twin sons that are seniors at Culver City High School as well. Mother went to the high school here in Culver City as well, so my family has been in this community and city almost 50 years. So it wasn't until I became, I guess, a mom that I realized how much a village and community means and how much that helps just one child like myself sacrificing weekends and you name it. It took a village, it took a community, and that's kind of what led me back to Culver City High School to coach and to help because I know how much one person impacts another. So thank you so much. We appreciate your support. If you haven't been out to any of our track meets, please come out if you ever.
Alright, a commendation celebrating the third anniversary of the Shea Hotel, a destination by Hyatt. Whereas in 2012, the city adopted the planned development zone, which governed the development in inter-jurisdictional Ivy Station. And whereas, the city's vision has come to fruition as a successful regional destination connecting downtown LA, the West Side, and Culver City through multimodalities, including light rail, vehicle, and bus routes, and a pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use, transit-oriented development. Located at Ivy Station. And whereas, throughout the last three years, the hotel has established itself as a cultural hub, established as a vibrant gathering place for locals and visitors, an economic driver, increasing lunch practices into its operation, aligning with the city's green initiatives and fostering a walkable neighborhood. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California hereby commemorates October 28th, 2024, and wishes the hotel, its owners, and staff many more years of success as a regional hub in the heart of screen land. Dated this 20th day of October 24th, signed by the mayor, vice mayor, and most of the council members.
Good evening, members of City Council and community. Thank you so much for this recognition. My name is Adam Edelman, and I'm the general manager of the Shea. On behalf of our team, I'd like to express our appreciation for the support we've received from Culver City over the past three years. Since opening, we've not only worked to create a space that serves the visitors, coming travelers, to experience everything Culver City has to offer. Looking ahead, we're excited to continue strengthening our ties with the community and playing our part in the city's future growth. Thank you again for the recognition and for allowing the Shea to be a part of Culver City.
You want to hear from Unity of the West Side? Come up. A commendation to Unity of the West Side, celebrating 75 years in Culver City. Whereas, the Unity Movement was founded by Charles and Myrtle Fillmore in 1889, rooted in Christianity and honoring ancient wisdom from many faith traditions and respecting all people and circumstances. And whereas, Unity of the West Side is a spiritual community founded in October of 1949 by a group of like-minded people seeking a positive path for spiritual living, beginning as a study group under the leadership of Reverend Dolly Phillips, a licensed Unity consecrated on July 4, 1954, but was sold after some changes in leadership, after which Paula Staples, a prominent Culver City businesswoman, purchased 10724 Barman Avenue in Culver City, which was originally built in 1932, made improvements and expanded the building and gifted it to Reverend Dolly. And in 1965, West Side Unity Church formally established its permanent spiritual center in Culver City. And whereas, over the many years since Solner, Reverend John Morrow, Reverend Dr. Robert Hill, Reverend Joseph Power, Reverend John Kuldech, Reverend Charlie Murray, and Reverend Brent Fletcher. And whereas, since 2017, Unity of the West Side has survived a fire under the leadership of Reverend Carol Scotta. And whereas, the Unity of the West Side recently held an interfaith event to honor the United Nations International Day of Peace. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Culver, expressing its mission to be a spiritual beacon, inspiring unity through sacred service, prayer, and education. Dated this 14th day, October 2024, signed by the.
Thank you so much to the City Council and we also have some of our, our members here aside for at least 30 years, including myself. Our minister is Reverend Carol Scotta, and she'll say a couple of words, but this is really such an important event for, in Culver City and to have served this community for all of these years. So thank you very much for this honor and Reverend Carol.
Hi, I'm Reverend Carol, and our services are Sunday at 10:00 a.m. Just wanted to let you know, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to be doing three separate commendations for Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. I'm wondering if all three should be up at the same time and I'll read them off. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start, I'm actually really happy to be doing this. I served on the very first City Commendation Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, Leonardo Wilborn. Whereas, Leonardo Wilborn, a Culver City resident and active community member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2022 and served as a member for his two-year term. And whereas, Leonardo Wilborn served on the homelessness to increase temporary shelter and housing within Culver City by supporting staff efforts around the following projects: Culver City Safe Sleep Program, Culver City Project Home Key Interim Housing and Permanent, Permanent Support Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the city, of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day of October 2024, signed by the mayor, myself, and the entire council. Mr. Vera, I'm sure will want to do it when he arrives. Congratulations. Shaker again. Member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2020 and served as a member from 2020 to 2022 and chair from 2022 and to 2024. Participated as an enumerator for the 2023 homeless count. And whereas, Daniel Brent, on behalf of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, would attend city council meetings to provide frequent updates around the body's work plan. And whereas, Daniel Brent advocated to increase homeless, Culver City Project Home Key Interim Housing and Permanent Supportive Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends Daniel Brent for his dedicated service and encourages him to remain an active part of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day. And finally, Rachel. Rachel Felstein. Whereas, Rachel Felstein, a Culver City resident and active community member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2020 and served as a member for her four-year, participated as an enumerator for the 2022 and 2023 homeless counts. Whereas, Rachel Felstein advocated to increase homeless supportive service, temporary shelter, and housing within Culver, Permanent Supportive Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends, Rachel, I gotta correct this, to remain an active part of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day of October 2024, once again signed by the mayor, myself, and council.
And council, we do have Kin Kin G here from the, who've been on the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. It's going to be shorter than what you said, so if you bear with me for a couple of seconds. Basically, during the tenure of these guys, we saw the, a city launch a multimodal approach to solve of emergency shelter and permanent housing. We also saw the opening of the Safe Sleep Wellness Village program initiated. We are continuing the Master Lease program, of course, and as we all know, the Mobile Crisis Team was launched first time in five years. Currently, as Chair of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, my colleague, Vice Chair Wilborn is here as well, and we would like to congratulate you and we'd like to express our thanks and gratitude for the, the services of Director, the director as well, who's not here tonight, but in any event, thank you so much for the work that we all did together. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Are we doing the, the certificate before or after the performance? Before? Okay, great. All right. So last but not least, we're in for a very, 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 very special treat, World Ballet. Our honorees are recognized, let's come down, and I'd like to introduce to y'all Michelle DeAngelis, our recognizing World Ballet Day, an annual celebration of the illustrious art form. And in honor of this proclamation, we have wonderful, beautiful ballerinas from Culver City Academy Ballet, and they are part of the pre-professional program. So let's give them a warm round of applause and welcome them to our space.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Michelle DeAngelis, and I am the proud owner of Culver City Academy of Ballet, Culver City's preeminent school of ballet training. I am here today with four of our pre-professional ballet students in honor of World Ballet Day, which is officially celebrated within the ballet community every year. Charlotte Duffy, Rory Verossi Vanis, Cleo Haddon, and Camille Sassen will be showcasing variations from professional classical ballets that they have been working on for the Youth America Grand Prix a week over the span of four to six days every week. I can think of no better way to celebrate World Ballet Day than by giving you this glimpse of all the hard work these four girls have put into their preparation and training this year. Since I myself was a young dancer, World Ballet Day has been a momentous day, and it is an honor to be able to share it with our friends.
One more thing. I want to give a special thanks to, oh, really quick, I want to give a special thanks to Lacey Vanis for quarterbacking this whole thing and making sure that our arts is celebrated in Culver City. We really appreciate it. And we're going to sit so that we can fully pay attention to what's happening. So thank you so much for being.
On the council chambers, camera, so we'll be able to see it that way.
All right, a commendation celebrating the third anniversary of the Shea Hotel, a destination by Hyatt. Whereas in 2012, the city adopted the planned development zone, which governed the development in inter-jurisdictional Ivy Station. And whereas, the city's vision has come to fruition as a successful regional destination connecting downtown LA, the West Side, and Culver City through multimodalities, including light rail, vehicle, and bus routes, and a pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use, transit-oriented development. Located at Ivy Station. And whereas, throughout the last three years, the hotel has established itself as a cultural hub, established as a vibrant gathering place for locals and visitors, an economic driver, increasing lunch practices into its operation, aligning with the city's green initiatives and fostering a walkable neighborhood. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California hereby commemorates October 28th, 2024, and wishes the hotel, its owners, and staff many more years of success as a regional hub in the heart of screen land. Dated this 20th day of October 24th, signed by the mayor, vice mayor, and most of the council members.
Good evening, members of City Council and community. Thank you so much for this recognition. My name is Adam Edelman, and I'm the general manager of the Shea. On behalf of our team, I'd like to express our appreciation for the support we've received from Culver City over the past three years. Since opening, we've not only worked to create a space that serves the visitors, coming travelers, to experience everything Culver City has to offer. Looking ahead, we're excited to continue strengthening our ties with the community and playing our part in the city's future growth. Thank you again for the recognition and for allowing the Shea to be a part of Culver City.
You want to hear from Unity of the West Side? Come up.
A commendation to Unity of the West Side, celebrating 75 years in Culver City. Whereas, the Unity Movement was founded by Charles and Myrtle Fillmore in 1889, rooted in Christianity and honoring ancient wisdom from many faith traditions and respecting all people and circumstances. And whereas, Unity of the West Side is a spiritual community founded in October of 1949 by a group of like-minded people seeking a positive path for spiritual living, beginning as a study group under the leadership of Reverend Dolly Phillips, a licensed Unity consecrated on July 4, 1954, but was sold after some changes in leadership, after which Paula Staples, a prominent Culver City businesswoman, purchased 10724 Barman Avenue in Culver City, which was originally built in 1932, made improvements and expanded the building and gifted it to Reverend Dolly. And in 1965, West Side Unity Church formally established its permanent spiritual center in Culver City. And whereas, over the many years, since Solner, Reverend John Morrow, Reverend Dr. Robert Hill, Reverend Joseph Power, Reverend John Kuldech, Reverend Charlie Murray, and Reverend Brent Fletcher. And whereas, since 2017, Unity of the West Side has survived a fire under the leadership of Reverend Carol Scotta. And whereas, the Unity of the West Side recently held an interfaith event to honor the United Nations International Day of Peace. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Culver, expressing its mission to be a spiritual beacon, inspiring unity through sacred service, prayer, and education. Dated this 14th day, October 2024, signed by the.
Thank you so much to the City Council and we also have some of our, our members here aside for at least 30 years, including myself. Our minister is Reverend Carol Scotta, and she'll say a couple of words, but this is really such an important event for, in Culver City and to have served this community for all of these years. So thank you very much for this honor and Reverend Carol.
Hi, I'm Reverend Carol, and our services are Sunday at 10:00 a.m. Just wanted to let you know, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be doing three separate commendations for Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. I'm wondering if all three should be up at the same time and I'll read them off. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start, I'm actually really happy to be doing this. I served on the very first City Commendation Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, Leonardo Wilborn. Whereas, Leonardo Wilborn, a Culver City resident and active community member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2022 and served as a member for his two-year term. And whereas, Leonardo Wilborn served on the homelessness to increase temporary shelter and housing within Culver City by supporting staff efforts around the following projects: Culver City Safe Sleep Program, Culver City Project Home Key Interim Housing, and Permanent, Permanent Support Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the city, of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day of October 2024, signed by the mayor, myself, and the entire council. Mr. Vera, I'm sure will want to do it when he arrives. Congratulations. Shaker again. Member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2020 and served as a member from 2020 to 2022 and Chair from 2022 and to 2024. Participated as an enumerator for the 2023 homeless count. And whereas, Daniel Brent, on behalf of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, would attend city council meetings to provide frequent updates around the body's work plan. And whereas, Daniel Brent advocated to increase homeless, Culver City Project Home Key Interim Housing and Permanent Supportive Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends Daniel Brent for his dedicated service and encourages him to remain an active part of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day. And finally, Rachel. Rachel Felstein. Whereas, Rachel Felstein, a Culver City resident and active community member, was appointed to the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in 2020 and served as a member for her four-year, participated as an enumerator for the 2022 and 2023 homeless counts. Whereas, Rachel Felstein advocated to increase homeless supportive service, temporary shelter, and housing within Culver, Permanent Supportive Housing Program, and Culver City's Motel Voucher Program, Culver City Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends Rachel Felstein to remain an active part of the city's creative and cultural life. Dated this 28th day of October 2024, once again signed by the mayor, myself, and council.
And council, we do have Kin Kin G here from the, who've been on the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. It's going to be shorter than what you said, so if you bear with me for a couple of seconds. Basically, during the tenure of these guys, we saw the, a city launch a multimodal approach
I didn't read this. Yeah, oh, so we'll step up. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And it's set up here. Okay. Brief abbreviated version of our land acknowledgement, the formal full land acknowledgement as prepared by the Equity and Human Relations Committee is in the back. The City of Culver City formally acknowledges that the land that we inhabit today is the ancestral land of Indigenous and recognizes their enduring connection to this land as its original caretakers. We are committed to supporting and uplifting the Gabriellino people and to fostering a deeper understanding of the histories and identities of all indigenous peoples in this region. We encourage all residents and visitors to join us in their cultural legacies. Thank you. And we do not have any report on action taken in closed session. So we'll move now to community announcements. Councilmember Erickson.
Downtown Culver City yesterday was just amazing how many of the residents and store participated and how many were residents who were there celebrating. So it was a great event. It was really fun to see all the new costumes that has come out on the market. It's amazing. So that was a great event.
... event at Climate Palooza at West LA College. It was full of college students and high school students, many of whom view climate change as one of the most important issues in addressing climate change. Also last Thursday, as you see the sign here, Culver City welcomed Health and Human Services Secretary Xavier Becerra to our Culver City Senior Center to talk to older adults about President Biden's initiative to lower prescription drug costs, their health care. And the mayor and councilmember Vera were also in attendance. And just a special thanks to Councilwoman Sydney Kamlagardov for organizing the event.
Congresswoman.
Second?
Congresswoman.
Congresswoman. Thank you. Our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, Ted Stevens, and the Parks and Recreation staff for our dog park. They added new DG, one drinking fountain, six new concrete benches. They pressure washed all canopies and fences, plus trash cans, and raised all trees. There are also all the work, and they've been working in collaboration with the nonprofit that manages the dog park. And last but not least, just wishing everyone a safe and fun Halloween. I will be serving as a judge at the senior center's Halloween party on Thursday. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Grahan.
Women in Business and all of the honorees, I congratulate. It's really not just great, but important to celebrate the success of our women who are going out there and being entrepreneurs and taking leadership in our community. Today, Air EMS in Culver City, so thank you all for what you do. And also to piggyback on Councilmember Pooze's note about our Parks Department, tomorrow at 4 o'clock, the playground at elementary, excuse me, smaller kids. I believe it's six and under, maybe five and under. So that, I know the community has really been waiting a long time for that. The playground's been closed for, I think, since the beginning of summer. So thank you all for your patience. We were waiting on equipment to arrive. And unfortunately, we had to close it down because it was unsafe. So apologies for the delays, but it will be reopened tomorrow at 4 o'clock. So thank you to Parks.
Thank you for lifting up young people and inviting them into our space. Very grateful for that. And thank you so much for-